All right, I would like to call the January meeting of the Arundicoid Zoning Board of Appeals to Order if everyone would stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to welcome everyone to the 2015 meetings of the Arundicoid Zoning Board of Appeals. Before we get underway, there's a couple of things that I wanted to mention. First, I'd like to thank the town board for giving me the opportunity to continue to serve as chair and the privilege and pleasure of working with everyone on the board and helping to make Arundicoid a better place to live. Secondly, I'd like to acknowledge that Jason Vignette has resigned as a member of the board because he is now employed by the town, and so I'd like to congratulate him on that and hope that he'll continue to, you know, be active and interested in our board. I'd like to welcome Andre Evans as our alternate board member right for now. He will be, he's sitting here during Mr. Hammond's absence for three months or so, while he's enjoying, hopefully, a warmer climate. And then a few administrative details. We have a fire exit located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded. Tonight Donna is serving as our secretary. She's recording the meetings and taking notes for minutes of the meeting, not as a transcript, in order to help her identify who is speaking and make sure that things are correctly reflected in the minutes. When you come to the podium, we would ask you to state your name and your address. If you are the applicant or the applicant's representative, I will then ask you to raise your right hand and be sworn. We do that in order to ensure that in the future, if we find out that things that were represented to us and on the basis of which we act turn out not to be accurate, that we may have remedies, if necessary, to rectify that situation. If you're not the applicant or the applicant's resident, you don't need to be sworn. After being sworn, the applicant or their representative will have an opportunity to present their case to the board, during which time the board members may ask questions or engage in discussions or have comments about the application or materials that are being presented in support of it. Once the presentation by the applicant or their representative is completed, we then open the hearings to public input. We have three categories of public input. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The second is those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And the third category is those who aren't sure if they're for it or against it, but want to come and talk to us about it, and we welcome you at the podium as well. Once all of that has been completed, we then give the applicant or their representative an opportunity to present anything further that they wish to present, and then we'll close the hearing with respect to that case. We take the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda. Extra copies of the agenda are available at the table just inside the door into the room. Once we've completed all of the cases that are on the agenda, we'll take a short recess. After the recess, we will deliberate and make decisions on the cases that have been presented. There's no opportunity for any further public input at that point unless it's specifically requested by the board. We take the cases, we deliberate on the cases in the order in which the applicants remain present in the room at that time, so if the first applicant has left, we would take the second case first. And then, once all the cases that still have applicants remaining have been completed, we'll go back to the top of the agenda and follow through the agenda until we've resolved all the matters that are before us. You don't have to stay to hear the outcome. If you're interested in knowing the outcome of the case, you can either catch us on TV or you can call the Planning and Zoning Department tomorrow morning after nine, and they'll be glad to tell you what the decision was on the cases. I think that completes all of the preliminaries.
I need to ask a question. I might have to return myself from the St. Paul Boulevard.
Okay.
Because I do business there and I service my car.
All right, well, it's a decision that you make.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
All right. We will then open matter two of the first case on the agenda.
ZB 1501-1, upon the matter request by BSG Building Services Group acting as agent for Time Warner Cable for an area variance to maintain an existing 10-foot-high board-on-board fence exceeding maximum allowable height in front, side, and rear yards and fence type permitted forward of front foundation of building on premises 1589 Titus Avenue in an R1 residential district.
My name is Stephen Morrow. I'm here for 1589 Titus Avenue.
And your addresses?
My home address or my business?
If you ever want, you'd like to have broadcast.
465 Blossom Road.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I'd like to start with a little bit of an apology for being here under these circumstances. This is not the norm of the way we do business. There was a misunderstanding. We're a general contractor and a licensed electrical contractor. I had my electrical division manager come to the town to file the paperwork for a permit. I said, "Go get your building permit," all right? And away he went, and he left all the paperwork and the drawings, the full set of plans, and then he got called with a fee, came down, picked up his permit, came back, and it was just the fire marshal's permit. And I asked him, "Is that all that we need?" And he said, "Yeah." He says, "The guy says we're all set." And I should have probably been doing this a long time. I should have really second-guessed that, but I did not.
So that explains the existing part of the application.
That explains why I'm standing here.
Oh, okay.
There was a slight fence underneath the overhang before. They had a very small generator. The job that we bid, that we were rewarded, was to upgrade the generator for that hub site and bring in some new fiber optics for the hub site for Time Warner. I guess under the fire marshal's permit, we were allotted to install the generator, but nobody took into consideration the fact that they were going to fence around it. It's, I have pictures. I'm not, I can pretend I'm an architect. I'm here representing Time Warner and Building Services Group. The generator that you see before you is massive. I will also state that there's a lot of equipment inside this fence, exterior equipment, automatic transfer switch, manual transfer switch, panels. This fence was erected by Time Warner, well, by the architects for Time Warner for, you know, numerous reasons: aesthetic, so you're now looking at the generator; safety, so kids and things and other people cannot get at it; these gates are locked; and also for acoustics and for sound and noise. They also told me today, the, one of the hub managers stated that one of the reasons that this particular generator is so big is they went out and they spent, he said, approximately $9,000 more, okay, in baffles and muffler upgrades to this generator, right, to keep the decibel level low, knowing the fact that they were more or less in a residential neighborhood. He said that, in turn, was part of the issue with having this generator sit so tall.
I take it this, one of the 10 pictures that was presented to us is the generator?
Yes, yes. And there is a picture of it in, there's a couple of them, where us looking through the gates, right, at the generator within the fence. I will say right now, we held off the back no farther than any of the existing equipment that was located in the back.
These are the two pictures you're referring to?
Yes, sir. Yep. And, but, but like I said, the design of the thing to fit that generator in place was such that that fence was built under that, you know, that situation. Again, I talked to the lady here the other day, and we talked about things that we'd be willing to do, to maybe try to help this out a little bit. We took some measurements, had some pictures. I could probably, if you didn't want to see the generator, which I would think they'd rather look at this fence than this massive generator, we could probably chop about a foot off of this, okay? Drop it down to about nine feet. Still, the generator itself is about eight foot 10 off the ground. Willing to do anything to help Time Warner to be here, to get this thing to go through, we can paint it to match the house, right? Blend it in that way. I'd be willing to throw a couple of abreviate bushes or something in between the bollards in the front. I'm not, we, as BSG, all right, are not opposed to doing anything so that we can get past this situation.
All right. The record should reflect that we received an email from Corinne Chorney, who resides at 1595 Titus Avenue, who indicated that she wasn't sure she'd be able to be here tonight, but she wanted to have some input, and I see that she's not here. She indicated that she wasn't happy with the new view that she had from her backyard and bedroom window since the construction of the additional structures added during the late summer, early fall, and she thought that a shorter board fence continued from the, quote, "silly-looking 10-foot fence" and, quote, "installed in the rear of the property would be appropriate to hide the eyesore from both her view as well as the Eckert's property," who are the neighbors to the south on Boukard Street. And she felt that with the fence around the rear of the property, the 10-foot fence would not stand out as significantly as it currently does. What she's referring to, when she refers to additional structures, I think that she's referring to perhaps what's depicted on this photograph. It's things that are visible outside on the back.
No, those are all within the fence, sir.
Those are all within the fence.
If you look at her picture from this angle, right, there are two metal stands, they're HVAC equipment. Both of those were there existing.
Okay.
They've always been there. The panel box, the transfer switch that they made us relocate during the job, that's in the middle between these two structures, that is new.
Okay.
All right.
I have a question about what we're actually hiding here, or trying to cover up.
You're hiding a emergency generator?
Well, that's my question. This is a generator that produces electricity, right?
This is a generator in case the power goes off.
For emergency?
All right, for an emergency, yes, yes.
Because no emergency is pre-dormant.
If it's, it's pretty dormant, correct. It does, it does run on a cycle, just like any emergency generator you would see, like at your house. It's a diesel generator. It's fairly noisy even with the baffles and the extra money that they spent. So it would cycle, I don't know what the cycle time is. Usually they're once a month or something. They'll fire this thing up for half an hour, 45 minutes. And I just don't want to be quoted on that because the gentleman from Time Warner would have to be the one that states exactly how they cycle this. But you're right, right? Most of the time, that's going to sit in, I mean, that's, that's the whole goal. You don't want to lose power, right? They have, this is, this is a backup to the electric from RGNE, right? It has an automatic transfer switch, which is one of those boxes that you show, that's inside this fence on the wall of the building. There were panels there before, the old ones, they were taken off and the new ones were put on and upgraded. So this would be a backup to your electric. And actually, on this particular hub site, they have a safety-to-the-safety, which is almost a little more overkill. They have a manual transfer switch. God forbid the emergency generator does not fire, kick on, or runs out of fuel, right? You can bring in a manual portable generator, plug it into this manual transfer switch, and get Time Warner back up and running. And you've got all new fiber optics in this, in this hub site, and they look very, just, you know, a little discreet, right? It doesn't look like it's much, but there's well over a million dollars' worth of equipment inside of this building.
That's what I heard.
It's, these guys, you know, it's very expensive stuff, and it generates a lot of heat, and it runs under cooling all the time, 24/7. It's cameraed, they have it on security. And the facilities director on Mount Hope Avenue with their main office, he can see every one of these hub sites constantly, 24/7. You know, I think they're, I think they're a good company. I think they do their very best to, you know, to coincide with the areas. This one is unfortunate that we're standing here tonight like this.
Can I ask a question to the chairman and also legal staff and Donna? Is there a permit required to have this trailer, which has a diesel generator in it parked there? A, it's an R1 residential area, and yet a business is using it as a, some type of transfer station?
They have a variance granted before this was constructed to serve as the hub, to be located in that spot.
So they had, so there is a variance on record for the property?
They came before the town.
It was in 2000, I think, right?
We have to check to see if they said it's a transfer station.
Well, it's not a transfer station.
Or whatever.
They're replacing an existing gen, there was a generator on site.
Yes, there's an existing generator there, and it's an upgrade, and it's not, you said it was a trailer.
What's inside the, what's inside the building?
Inside the building itself?
Yes.
Or racks with all kinds of, like, equipment? I wouldn't, it's all...
About a million dollars' worth of equipment inside.
Yeah. I mean, this, this runs your fiber optics, your television.
So, okay, we, you had a, had to be a use variance, right, at one point to, for the property?
Must have been.
The question is, did, was another permit granted for this new trailer, this new?
Generator. It doesn't move. It's, it was brought in by Bolter Rigging and placed right on the pad and permanently wired in.
Was there a new?
And I have that permit from the fire marshal. That's what started this.
Did the fire marshal get the permit first before maybe reviewing it again, I guess? It's a good question.
The fire marshal reviewed, he reviewed the permit application and granted the permit for, and inspected the, and provided inspection of the installation of the generator itself.
Does that go with the building code, though? I mean, does the fire?
Yeah, that's, the, we have allowance for that, and that wasn't an issue. The generator itself wasn't the issue. The concern was in the, when the application was made, there was no mention on the application of the construction of a fence to enclose the generator, and so therefore, that was never reviewed.
So the only thing in front of us is the 10-foot fence?
The fence, yes. That's the only thing you need to...
I'm just, I'm just shocked that nobody's mentioned the fact that this generator is bigger, larger, noisier than the one pre-existing, and that they didn't get any type of real permission to upgrade and get bigger. I mean, they got the fire marshal to give his blessing on it for safety factor, but was it, you know, through the building department or the town code for the size, the going larger all the way around? I mean, if they were, in just about anything, if we replace something, we need a permit to get it replaced. And if you go larger from the, from the existing sizes, you usually need additional variance to do that. And this is all done now, and my question is, does anybody know about it? Obviously, the other question is, is anybody complaining about it, but, other than me at this point, but I don't, I don't...
In speaking with the Eckert's who live immediately south on Boukard, they told me that this generator is actually quieter and results in less vibrations than the one that was there before.
That's a plus.
So it may be an upgrade, but it's a downgrade in terms of the effects as they noticed them.
Okay. Again, I just, my question is, is, does the town require some type of additional permit for it?
They, they did obtain a permit for the generator. No variance would have been needed to get that permit for the generator. The fence, as it's designed, requires a variance, which is why they're before you today. And best practice would be that this would happen beforehand. There was a miscommunication, and they, the BSG thought they were all set and had all the permits they needed, except we didn't, weren't aware that the fence was being reconstructed the way it has been.
So let me just ask one thing for clarification. Then it sounds like, to my colleague's point, that the increase in the size or the capacity of the unit was covered by the original variance that was granted in 2000. Is that right?
Doesn't sound that way to me.
And/or the fire marshal's review.
I think the only one that gave it the blessing was the fire marshal.
Right. And that may be all that was, apparently, that's all that we needed, is what I'm understanding.
But it sounds like the question is whether or not the original variance covered the increased capacity. You know, I would think that it does, but I don't know.
Before my time.
It may be related to the use, so.
Yeah, it's the same.
And that's what covered it, so I would think so. But the, my understanding from speaking to the Eckert's is that they didn't have any issue with the fence, or they knew what was behind the fence.
Mm-hmm.
Ms. Chorney had no idea behind the fence. She thought it was a mystery. And she was concerned that kids might climb over the fence, especially since it's that board-on-board that sort of has the exposed slats for toe and handles.
Mm-hmm.
But more important than that, she was wondering if you could do something to cover the, and she thinks they're new, so I don't know, the boxes that are sticking out of the back of the house. She was hoping that you'd carry over maybe an eight-foot fence over to the back corner of the house so that she doesn't have to look at those. I'll pass that along to you.
Okay.
But other than that, you know, she just thought that the view was different. But in the, in the summertime and looking at that, it seemed to me that she's probably not seeing much of the fence.
She's not seeing much of anything else. I've been there in the summer, and it's pretty dense back there.
Yeah.
You know, and the fence that was there existing, not as large or as, you know, as much area taken up, was a board-on-board before, so they just reproduced what was there.
Right, but they went 10 feet, what was there before, eight?
What was before was about 8'6", and it hung, it just, it hung out on the, underneath the overhang of the gable end of the building, right? With just one little gate that went into it, and it was a very cramped little area. Actually, it was kind of tricky to get the old one out and the new one in without having days of no generator on site. It just, God forbid, something happened.
The size of this generator is, is a lot larger than the other one was.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, by 10 times, 15 times larger? I mean, just based on the size of the fence and the size of the picture you're showing us.
Yeah, I do not have a picture, I do not have a picture of the old generator, but the old fence and generator sat right about where you would see all this new equipment on the wall.
Right, so.
Right? This is your gable end wall. Your new generator sits out, oh, yeah.
Couple of feet wide by...
It's, it was, it's a little surprising even to us when, when we got to the point of having Bolter bring it over. It was, but, like I said, they have told me that they've spent extra money, and part of their size increase, okay, was to keep the noise down for the neighbors.
Ms. Chorney didn't have any comments about noise or vibration coming from it? Only the Eckert's mentioned that, and they, they said that this one was much better than the old one. And I don't, I think directly across the street is where the 7-Eleven is.
Corner, yeah. It's on an angle.
And then there's another house that's behind the 7-Eleven, but they didn't have any, I haven't heard anything from them, so I think those are the only people that are affected.
Okay. I mean, I could see painting the fence gray all the way around.
Actually, I was thinking about that myself, and I, I was just there before the meeting because I forgot to go.
Uh-huh.
And I pulled it, and I see this, whoa, there's a big fence right here. And I'm thinking, it needs to be there. Really, I'm thinking it needs to be there, especially after hearing all the testimony tonight. But I'm also interested in your comment about willing to help the situation a little. My suggestion would be, I don't know what everybody else thinks, even in that front fence, but anybody who's by on Boukard, just a couple of abreviate or something that'll grow up and kind of hide that fence to soften it.
Maybe planted between the yellow posts.
Well, that's exactly where we would put them, because actually, it's supposed to be paved up to the fence, and they did not get to that because we lost time on the weather because this generator was late, and the ATS switch got lost in transit from wherever it came, so it delayed us. So instead of finishing the pavement, I mean, we could, you know, scare up that stone, clean it up, put a little topsoil down, and, you know, three abrevites or something across the front.
And a gray stain will probably...
And a gray stain, yeah.
...sloughen the view from the neighbor.
Sure. Mm-hmm. We'd do that all the way around, right? And do all three sides.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, we saw in the address, we saw in the address, they showed the, what, two boxes on the back of the building. You know, they said they've been there, but it's, it would be the...
Well, that's one of the issues that the neighbor raised, but it's not within the area of the fence, and so it's just a point of information for Time Warner because that equipment doesn't require a variance, so there's really...
You could make it a condition.
We could, we could, we could make it a condition that you continue the fence over at eight feet to the end of the corner of the house if we wanted to do that. That's what the neighbor would like to see done, if you're willing to do that.
Well, I mean, my only objection would be the fact that these two things have been sitting there for years, right? And to me, and like you said, in the summertime with the leaves on the trees, she's not seeing this. And I don't, I guess I don't understand why that all of a sudden is an issue. I understand the mistake with the fence.
She also talked about the salmon running up...
Yeah.
...the creek, so I don't know. That might be a spot to go fishing in town.
I don't know. I, you know, I would...
I don't know. I just wanted to make sure that the record reflected the fact that she had sent that and that, and the comments that the Eckert's had made when I was out there Saturday, so that's all.
I used to question the size of the unit that's been put there. I mean, I, you know, I don't know how to, whether we need to check into the fact that it needs to have some type of permit for it, it just...
Well, I think that we can, I think that...
It just seems like a big, huge piece of equipment put in a residential area with, with kind of...
I'll defer to our council, but I think probably the only thing that we can do about that is we could make it a condition, approval, that it be a condition that the generator otherwise meets the town's requirements. If it meets the town's requirements, then, you know, it isn't before us, really.
I think we should table it, I mean, it's just an idea, table it till we find out if it meets the town's requirements.
Well, what we're being told is that it does. And if we condition the, if we were to grant a variance and condition it upon the generator meeting the town's requirements, and then the generator was found not to meet the town's requirements, then it would have to come back in front of us because one of the conditions would fail, I think, correct?
Yeah, no, that's, that's right.
Okay.
You know, yeah, without having the file and the previous approvals, yeah, it's difficult to tell exactly what they covered, but it is definitely feasible that if there was a use variance granted for the site, that it would encompass the actual generator, and the reason they're back here is because there's an area, or there's an issue with the bulk area requirements presented by the fence, so that...
One of the differences between the use variance and the pre-existing non-conforming use is that a use variance, and correct me if I'm wrong, but a use variance, the use is allowed, so even if the use expands, it's still within the parameters of the variance, where if it's a pre-existing non-conforming use, it can't be expanded without getting a variance.
Right, that's right. So if, so if the existing use variance was vague and said, like, for Time Warner Cable, you know, operations and accessory uses, then sort of, as long as whatever they're doing on site doesn't violate setbacks, doesn't violate, you know, things like the fence being too tall, then, then they're okay, as far as the use goes. But the structures would just have to be then within the bulk area requirements under the code.
Personally, I feel more comfortable knowing that that was the case, other than making it a condition, but that's just me, but...
We'll talk about that later.
All right.
Any other questions or comments from any other members of the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone here to speak in opposition to this application? Would anyone like to come up to the podium and chat with us about this application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this case. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And we'll take the next case that's on our agenda for tonight.
ZB 1501-2, upon the matter request by Woods Oviet Gilman, LLP, acting as agent for Ferner Corp. for use variance to sell up to four automobiles on premises 3392 St. Paul Boulevard, George and Bob's Service Station in an R1 residential district.
Good evening, members of the board, Mr. Chairman, council. My name's Daniel Brennan from Woods Oviet Gilman, 2 State Street in Rochester. I'm here on behalf of Ferner Corp. and Dave Ferner, who's here with me today to answer any questions that you may have later. Ferner Corporation is better known as George and Bob's.
Will we interrupt? May I interrupt you for one moment?
You may.
People who are watching may wonder why I'm not having you raise your hand and swear you in. You're an attorney and counselor of law. As such, you are representing the applicant so that you are not offering testimony. You're advocating in support of the application that's submitted. And that explains why I'm not having you sworn in as I would the applicant. Just wanted to make that clear for anyone who's wondering why it's different for you.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome.
Ferner Corporation is better known as George and Bob's Service Station at 3392 St. Paul Boulevard in the town of Aronacoit. As I said before, Mr. Ferner is the principal of Ferner Corp., but he's also the chief auto mechanic at George and Bob's. He really does everything there. I guess you could call him both George and Bob. But we're here today because Mr. Ferner would like to grow his small business in the town of Aronacoit. Our request is for a use variance to allow a small number of automobiles to be sold at the business. The property is currently a legally existing non-conforming use for both automobile repair and gasoline sales. So what this use variance would do would be to allow Mr. Ferner to continue operating his business and to earn a decent salary. Because despite his tireless work at his business, Mr. Ferner was forced to eliminate his own salary from the bu, his budget this summer. And there's really two primary reasons for the financial hardship that's going on at George and Bob's. The first is that there's no convenience store on the property. And the second is that a major accident nearly destroyed the business's finances about 10 years ago. In 2004, a customer crashed a truck through one of the gas pumps on the property, causing serious damage. Mr. Ferner was forced to retrofit the entire operation, and a new fire suppression system was required to be installed by New York State. The business was forced to shut down for approximately two weeks during the rebuilding process. And what's more, Mr. Ferner was directed by the town to apply for a variance in order to build the same fire suppression system that he was being required by the state to install based on, based on this accident that happened that was through, through no fault of his own. That application for a variance was initially denied. And then it was appealed to the New York State Supreme Court. And eventually, Mr. Ferner was allowed to rebuild his property and reopen his business, but only after spending approximately $190,000 on construction costs and legal fees. And that's in addition to, you know, the money that he, he lost by staying closed for that period of time. Not long after the accident, a new competitor opened in the neighborhood. And the economics of the gasoline business changed quite a bit.
Who's a new competitor?
There is a new competitor, I believe it's called Haramza's.
Haramas?
Apologize, right.
The gas station down at Pattonwood?
Right, right.
Oh, okay. I wouldn't think that would be a competitor, but, okay.
It's, it's not too far, and, and I understand that there aren't, aren't a large number of service stations in the area. So we think that it probably did contribute to a sharp decline in sales. And if you look at, I believe it's attached as Exhibit E., you can see the exact number of gallons that were sold over each of the years since, we're going back to at least part of 2002. You can see a, a steep drop-off in 2004 when the accident occurred. And you can also see, and well, and you can see the, the months that it was closed. And you can also see that sales have been declining ever since then. And so we would attribute that in part to new competition, but, but more importantly, from sort of the change in the economics of the gasoline sales business, which I mentioned before. And that's that most, most gas stations these days have a convenience store.
I'm, I'm, I don't mean to interrupt you, but I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we approve the variance for Haramas Gas Station in January 2006?
I don't know the date, but we did.
I know it was my first meeting on the board, and I think that was eight or nine years ago. Trying to think, something like that. It's around that time, all right.
So profits, profit margins on gasoline have always been fairly thin, but they've, they've been decreasing. And again, you can see the profit margins are labeled as Exhibit D. in your packet. And then we've got a few years of those. See, the, the profit margins are fairly volatile, and they've also been declining. And part of the problem here is that a lot of, a lot of competitors have convenience stores with their, with their gas stations. And so what the suppliers like to do, what the oil companies like to do is keep the profit margins for the small businesses extremely low. They really squeeze these small business owners because they do know that gasoline sales will often drive additional customers for convenience store sales, which are actually fairly high-margin business. And, and a lot of businesses can therefore survive on the profits they get from the convenience store. George and Bob's and, and some other small local businesses can't really survive or, or do well in that, in that situation when they don't have convenience stores. It's kind of become an unworkable business model. So, you know, the, the way we see it, Mr. Ferner now has three options. He can continue losing money. He can build a convenience store, which would also, of course, require a variance from this board. Or he can expand his auto repair business, which also is a legally existing, pre-existing use for the property. And Mr. Ferner is, is dedicated to continuing this business, which he's worked at for over 20 years now. And he's invested, invested really his entire life into this business, so that first option is, is out. But Mr. Ferner also wants to continue his business with as little impact to the surrounding neighborhood as possible. So we think that the second option is out as well. And that only leaves us with one final option. And we think it's actually a very good option for this neighborhood and for the business. Mr. Ferner knows that it's nearly impossible to increase gas or auto repair sales without selling cars. The two businesses go hand in hand. A customer can buy a car, and then they can return to the service station to have that vehicle repaired and, and serviced for life. This property can accommodate vehicle sales today. No modifications or additional investment, and that's, that's an important part, would be needed to sell automobiles. The property already has sufficient parking for the four vehicles that Mr. Ferner plans to have as for sale at the property. So as I'm sure most of you know, we have four elements that we need to meet today, or four elements that you would need to find have been proven to you in order to support a decision granting our request. The first of those elements is no reasonable return, that the property cannot yield a reasonable rate of return with any of the permitted uses. So this property is located in the R1 Residential District. The permitted uses in that district include single-family dwellings, of course, fire stations, farms, parks, churches, schools, home occupations, private garages, or public uses. As you can see from that list, there aren't a lot of things that would be compatible with the current use of the property as a gasoline and service station, including the, the setup of the property with gasoline containers underneath the, underneath the ground and with the service station building in the position that it's in. Most of those uses are completely incompatible. We have a sort of an initial estimate from a broker that it would cost anywhere from $100,000 to $150,000 to build a home on this site. That doesn't even include the potential cost for cleaning up any contamination on the site. And this is.
There'd be no site preparation included in that $150,000.
Right, that's just, you know, that's just.
Any idea what the site preparation cost might be?
We don't. But, but just to put things in perspective, you know, there's, there's gasoline containers underneath the ground. There's all of these pipes and systems that they use to, they use to deliver the gasoline. And we're talking about a service station that's been in this location since 1928. So any.
All that would have to be removed.
Right, absolutely. And any.
Cleaned up.
Cleaned up, yeah. Anything that's leaked in those nearly 100 years would have to be remediated for any of the permitted uses in the district. So I think it's fairly clear that none of those other uses are, are viable in this location, given the current state of the property. I think it's also important to look at the investment that Mr. Ferner and his corporation have made in this town. The total investment, while the, the property itself was purchased for approximately $207,000 20 years ago. There were also $180,000 in franchise fees that he had to pay to the oil companies to permit him to do business. In 1999, he renovated part of the building. There was a $57,000 investment in 1999. And as a result of the accident in 2004, there were approximately $190,000 in expenses. And I'd like to note that there's a typo in the letter that we submitted that incorrectly has those, the total investment as a result of the 2004 accident in one place, I believe on page three. And then the total amount invested is also incorrect as a result. But I think the important thing for everyone to look at is the exhibits that we've attached that have the full breakdown of the numbers. So you can see the exact numbers that are in the exhibits. Those numbers are correct. And if you add them up, you come to approximately $634,000 that's been invested in the community. The benefit that we're getting out of that large sum of money invested is approximately $18,000 in losses for this year alone up until October. And I think there's another very important point. When you look at the, the balance sheet, which is labeled as Exhibit F., you'll see.
If I could go back to Exhibit B. for a second, you.
Absolutely.
The canopy pumps, it lists there $190,000. Does that include the legal fees for the lawsuit?
I believe that it does.
Okay.
And there's, yeah, there's an even, there's an even better breakdown as, for Exhibit C. So I think that's probably why the numbers were wrong on the letter. But I, I direct you to Exhibit C. for a full cost breakdown. And Mr. Ferner can answer any further questions that you may have on that. And, but one of the important points on the, on the balance sheet, and that's Exhibit F., is that in approximately, I think, June, Mr. Ferner cut his own salary from the budget based on the losses that he was having. So here's a guy that's working full-time. He's been working full-time for approximately 20 years now, and he's not even paying himself a salary any longer. That's, that's how dire a situation it is for this business. It's also likely to continue. If you look at the declining sales, that's in Exhibit E., you know, this is, this is clearly a trend. They've been hanging on now for about 10 years, but it doesn't really show any signs of improving, especially, you know, and it's a volatile market. But you look at what gas prices are now, they're, you know, very, very low relatively speaking. So that will most likely continue. And that sort of brings me into my next point, the next element of the test that we have to meet, and that's that these are unique circumstances. The property owner's inability to yield a reasonable rate of return is due to unique circumstances of the property that are not applicable to other properties in the area. I think, you know, in particular, this gas station, which has been around since 1928, it's probably the oldest service station in the town of Aronacoit. That in itself is a fairly unique circumstance. The accident in 2004 is unique. That's part of the cause of, of some of the financial troubles that they've been having.
I have a question about.
Yeah.
I wonder when we're going to get to that because I think your numbers are terrific. A lot of people come for use variances, and they're not prepared with numbers. You've done a lot of homework on this, and it's, it means a lot. And we can't do much without them, so it's, thank you for that. My question is, when that truck hit the gas pump, was there a, you know, insurance settlement for that? If so, was that reflected here at all and had an impact on this, this cost of rebuilding that whole thing?
There, there was, and there were insurance benefits as a result of the accident. Unfortunately, we do not have paperwork right now that shows exactly what it was. But we believe it was, it replaced about 50% of the costs associated with, with the accident. So it, it certainly did not cover everything, and.
It probably wouldn't cover the upgrade.
Right, that's correct. And I'm fairly certain that it would not have covered legal fees or, yeah, like you said, this fire suppression system, which was the canopy, which was also the reason they had to go for the, for a variance in the first place. So to answer your question, yes, there were insurance proceeds that covered a good portion of the losses. But what we're really relying on today, and we, we provided this going back, the investments over the years to give you a background. But what I think is most important is, is F., the, the balance sheet for this year. Because that, that I think clearly shows you this business is losing money, and they're in, they're in a very tight spot right now. So I think, you know, if you take into account the accident that happened in 2004, as, as well as the situation where this is a gas station that does not have a convenience store, based on its location, we don't necessarily think that's an appropriate use to have on the property either. So altogether, that is, that is a unique circumstance. So you can consider, or you can find that number two, your second element, has been met. The third element is that the hardship was not self-created. I think that one is probably the most clear. The change in the sort of economics of the gasoline sales, as well as the accident, those are two forces that were wholly outside of Mr. Ferner's control or anyone that worked at his business. In fact, I understand that his business did fairly well for the first maybe 10 or 12 years that he ran it. And it was more recently that, that this decline occurred. He was not able to predict that. The fourth element is the essential character of the area. The surrounding uses and facilities will not be materially harmed by the granting of this variance.
I'd like to jump in on this one. If your client has granted the variance, is your client going to want to have streamers with little flags or signs that say car sales or used car lots? Are they going to want to put stickers on the front of the cars to show what the price is? What kind of signage are they going to want there that will change the character of the neighborhood? Are they going to want those inflatable guys with the arms?
No inflatable guys with arms, no streamers. We, we do understand and respect the fact that this is a residential neighborhood. The only marketing that we would plan to do is to have, you know, a price on the vehicle itself that would show people driving by that, just sort of to indicate that the vehicle is for sale. I don't even know that the number itself is, is all that important, but I think the price signifies that the vehicles are for sale. So there are no modifications. We don't need a site plan. We will not be changing any of the physical aspects of the property itself.
And where is your client intending to park the cars? By, by the fence or by the bay doors?
By the fence. Vehicles will remain, there are approximately, there are 10 parking spots on the property. And we've included a site plan, which is labeled Exhibit A. And I believe you can see all of the spaces on there. They should be marked, even though the site plan is, is a little out of date. There are 10 spaces, I've counted them myself, on that southern, it's the southern property line. That's where they'll remain throughout the day while people can pass. But he also has the indoor spaces, the, the garage bays, which is where the cars will be moved in the evenings to prevent theft and to prevent any deteriorations. These will be new cars, so that would be an ideal place to, to store them.
So will they be stored or parked in front of the bay doors to the north of the property?
No.
On the outside?
They will not be stored there.
I think if I understand correctly, they're going to be stored indoors at night, right?
That's what he just said, yeah. I just wanted to make sure I got it right.
Right, inside at night, along the fence during the day. And it's also, we're, we're happy to say, look, we, we won't go beyond four cars. That's what Mr. Ferner believes he can sell, and that's what he believes he can make, make a profit on. And, and, you know, start to turn his business around and make it viable again. You know, four cars at a time might result in 12 to 20 sales over the year, and that would be enough to, to make a modest salary for himself. So I don't think there will be any changes to the character of the neighborhood, certainly not negative or material changes. And one of the important parts of that is the traffic. We won't expect any additional or significant additional traffic. Maybe at the most 20 automobile, automobile sales a year. And if you look at the exhibit that shows E., that shows the decline in gas sales, I mean, this is a property that has seen far more traffic. mean, this is a property that has seen far more traffic over the past 10, 20 years, probably over the past century than it does now, because of the fact that there is no convenience store there, and people tend to prefer to stop at service stations that have convenience stores. So we, we've already got less traffic than, than we've had historically. The automobile sales will not serve to increase neighborhood traffic in any way. There's no modifications to the property, so there will be no negative material impacts on the neighborhood. So I believe you have enough evidence in front of you today to find that the fourth and final element has been met. And that concludes my prepared presentation, but I would be happy to entertain questions.
Can you further explain if both the cars will be sold too, but there's no advertisement, then how will they know that he's selling cars and how will this increases income?
My understanding is that they do online marketing as well, that there are other channels, that they won't be necessarily just relying on people driving by. But I think he, he does have a fairly large customer base that also he's, he's hoping will, will probably be future customers for his auto sales as well. But there aren't, you know, as I mentioned before, there aren't any plans for additional signs, streamers, certainly none of the waving guys, we don't need that.
Seems to me that if you, if you buy it, I use automobile, you can get it serviced and repaired from the guy that sold it to you, that's a big plus.
That's right.
Now, would that be something that would be like in an Aranacoit poster, something like that, to let them know? I, you can't, I know what you're referring to with the banners and the searchlights and everything else. Online works.
Right.
But I think that, that element of like ownership, responsibility to your customers is a huge plus. Rather than when you drive off the lot, you're, we'll see you.
Absolutely. Oh, I, I mean, I, I should have said that to begin with. Obviously, print media is, would be a great place to advertise to locals. And, you know, the, the fact that Mr. Ferner has, you know, 20 odd years of experience repairing vehicles probably puts him in a good position to judge, you know, when he goes to the auction, which, which vehicles are going to be good to sell as well. So, you know, not just the property itself, but I think the property owner sort of lends itself to this new business, probably worked pretty well.
Can you explain this quickly? I'm using a pertinent, but how does that auction work? I mean, the cars have to come from someplace, right?
I don't know a whole lot about that.
Oh, Mr. Repairing would know something about that.
Oh, yeah?
And he would.
Is this a conflict of interest?
It is for me, yes. I will be recusing myself from this, from this-
I wouldn't suggest any deliberation.
No, I, I planned on it. That's what he was asking me before we started. So if I understand, it's going to be basically a passive sale as far as the passersby, the only thing that would bring notice to it might be a brightly colored sticker with the price on it in the windshield.
Absolutely.
Similar to what they do at the service station, or I'm not even sure if it's a service station anymore, at Titus and Portland.
I believe that's correct, yes. I think that's all they do there as well.
Do they even service the cars there anymore?
I think they do.
Do they?
Based on their, on Google search, but I'm not sure.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here that wishes to speak in favor of the application? Step right up, please. Well, we'll get to you in a minute. First, we do the, those in favor, then we do those opposed, then we do those who want to talk.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. I'm Ron Lerner, Three Marks Hill Lane, within about a five-minute walk of Dave's operation. And I've lived in Aranacoit since 1942, and ever since I was old enough to get on a bicycle, I was very familiar with that, with that enterprise and its previous management and ownership as well. I would point out that one of the problems with the gas sales business is that more people are driving more economical cars than ever before, so the, the number of gas guzzlers is fewer, requiring less gas sales, although I have a couple of thirsty ones that I used during the summer. This business has been in operation for a very long time, and Mr. Ferner has acted as an employer many times, for the first employer of entry-level jobs for many of the Aranacoit youth, and has been a mentor. Many of these have gone on to be very successful in later life, having learned how to work first at this establishment. And I would also point out that the previous ownership, the late George Howcroft, would sometimes bring back several used cars from Florida, usually very low mileage green puffs that had never seen a snowflake or a salt, a salt truck, and sold a few there without any disruption, whatever, to the neighborhood. Because it's site limited, there would be really no convenient place to put more than three or four used, used cars in addition to the ones that are in and out of there every day for service. This operation has contributed greatly to the economic and tax base of Aranacoit by providing employment. At the moment, everyone, with one exception, everyone that works there is a resident of West Aranacoit. We need all the economic activity that we can get in this town, because we're very limited in, in the size and scope of what can be put here to add to the tax base. It's been here for a very long time. It's very convenient for myself, I can walk there to get my morning newspaper if, if I want to, and I can certainly drive there in a very short distance. If anything needs to be done, I have, for both myself and numerous other people in Aranacoit, they can drop the car off, walk home, or if it's a little far, get a ride home. And it's a cornerstone of this section of St. Paul Boulevard. And for that reason, since there aren't going to be any streamers, lights, and, and other stuff like that, that it'll simply look the way it always has, that you should approve this application. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in favor of the application? You indicated you wish to speak in opposition, sir, step right up to the podium.
You know, residential section, there, people move in there for quality of life.
Can you first give us your name and your address, please, sir?
My name is Vince, I live on Cooper Road. Residential area is for a quality of life, if I understand that correctly. Every time you grant somebody a variance, that takes away from the R1 residential, depreciates their property, the integrity of the neighborhood, and everything else. Now, people could call it a hardship because they're not making money on that property. If you're a businessman, you're making an investment, if you make out all well and good. If you don't, you pack up and you get on with, with something else. So as far as hardship goes, I don't want to hear hardship. I mean, if you're going to make, you're, you're a businessman, you know you're going to make money, or you're not going to make money. Now, I don't believe people should go to work every day and pay on the mortgage and everything in an R1 residential area for a quality of life and then be taken away. Maybe four cars here today, tomorrow could be something else. I've been fighting with this town with, with a few of your variances for quite a while. But now, understanding that, that quality of life, is it R1 district? Keep it R1 and don't take away from the character of the neighborhood, and don't take it away from the other people. A lot of these people are paying on a mortgage that, more than what their house has worth. They get up every day and they go to work and they pay their mortgage, they don't come over here and tell you, hey, I'm crying, I'm not making it, this and that, you know? What the hell? Thank you for your time, and you can have a good laugh, I'll be back. I'll be back facing you soon, shortly.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Don't worry about it. Quality of life in R1 section, that's what people pay for, and that's what they should have, the quality of life.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application? Would any like, one like to come up and talk to us about it? Would the applicant like to address anything that was raised during the public input section?
My name is Dave Ferner. I'm the owner of the station at 3392 St. Paul Boulevard. I li, I used to live in Aranacoit, I just moved recently to Penfield. I had three homes in Aranacoit. I'm living in Penfield right now in a townhouse.
I have a question for you, sir.
Sure.
Your attorney mentioned that you were looking to sell about 20 cars a year. Is that correct?
Yeah, I actually, yeah, that's probably the maximum amount I would want to sell.
So how do you go, what, what's the math, or what's the thinking for four cars at a time to translate to 20 cars over the course of the year?
A good question, and Mike recused himself about the auctions, but my, since the downturn in the gasoline sales, which we can get into, I, the used car business, I do a little different than somebody else. I get a call from somebody or a customer, I do a lot of estate sales because I'm willing to pay him more than most dealers would. I also have cars that, some dealers will call me and say, I have a sales guy, say, hey, we got a car coming in, it's in low mileage and beautiful shape, but the engine's rattling like crazy, we don't want to touch it. Obviously, I'll take it in, put it over inside, put a motor in it, or fix it when it's time, you know, I have time, it's a fill-in job. So I see it all as a two-point thing, I want to make something on a sale of the car, but I also, who better to fix it? That's what I do. And he mentioned, I've been there 20 and a half years, I've actually been a mechanic since 1968, so you can do the math from there, so. Been a wander awhile. But that, that's all I'm looking at, and that would substitute also, which my attorney didn't bring up, is when we had the accident, we were, the accident happened in January, we completely closed down in June of that year, and didn't get back up running at all until, it was September, late September. One of the other things that happened was, we used to have a, in fact, the sign is in the Aranacoit post, that they took a picture of her back up and running. One of the things was, we used to have a full-service business that was very, very large, where we helped people that didn't want to pump their gas. That generated, I don't see the paper here, but I can tell you, generated about an extra $14,000, $15,000 a profit a year without having to hire anybody, the guy's already there. And as the chairman mentioned, if you look at the sales, I actually started a pickup business after the extra pump and the canopy, and it could be a coincidence, I don't know, but right after Harem was open, you can see my business stopped, went right downhill. That's really, you know, I can't say that's what it was, but if you look at everything else, I actually, it was increasing the business after the canopy, and then it went downhill from there. But to answer your question, I, you know, a dozen cars is about all I want to handle, and I could make a nice little profit on that.
So, I mean, because you are a repair shop, you can have as many cars as you're allowed legally to, you know, on your property. If you were allowed only three cars, that you could put the price tags on the front, those stickers on the front, if we only gave you permission to have three of them with the price tag, would that mean you wouldn't be able to hit your 20 cars a year?
No, I don't think that would make a big difference. Three is, three is probably an okay number, too. Again, I don't, again, remember, I'm working on most of them, and so I, you know, I don't want to stack them up, I want to say, okay, I got a slow day, somebody canceled a big job, now I'm going to pull this car in, and, you know, we had a slow week, so we put a motor in the car.
Thank you.
If you happened to sell 25 a year, you wouldn't complain about that?
No, I would not.
But you'd only be doing three or four at a time, depending upon what-
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
On the hardship, you stated in 2004, we see that the total number of gallons sold was about $328,000, roughly, I'm not going to do that, I mean, it's never, but in 2005 and '06, your, almost doubled your sale.
Remember, I was shut down?
Correct.
For the repairs, yeah, and I had an extra pump and canopy. The original projection was, when you put a canopy up, your, your volume's going to increase 30% because, because of the bad weather, and the, it's more, people like the lighting when they pull in at night.
Okay, you seem like the two largest years was 2005 and '06.
Mm-hmm.
Your sales have been declining since 2010, so from 2009 until present, can you speak to why the sales started declining? I don't think 2004, if I was in any comment, which I'm not, is an issue, but more of a problem, as far as your selling sales started in 2009 going forward to present. Or is it 525, decreased by roughly 30%, by another 10%, and moved back 10, 10 to 20% since 2010, and roughly, man?
Again, competition is the biggest thing, and you've got, obviously, your Delta Sanus can tie in gas with it, Hess ties and stuff, so I mean, obviously, that's, that's part of it, too. And Hermans did open up, and he's probably pumping 600,000 gallons a year, so I got to imagine he can also, any business like his, not just specifically him, can say, okay, buy this much groceries, I'm going to discount the gas and give it away to get you in the door. Whereas I, I have no way to, to give the, you give it away.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to that matter. We had one other matter that we had previously tabled, and I just want to be clear for the record, that was the application with respect to Denzmore Road. We tabled it and referred it to the planning board for a secret review, and my understanding is the planning board is continuing to look at that, so that there's no need for us to do anything further with that. And, and by not acting, we're not giving them any opportunity to have something granted by operation of law?
No, that's right, it's being, it's, they, they agreed to the tailing of the application pending the, the planning boards.
Okay. Then we will take a brief recess, we'll reconvene at about 8:15. All right, so we are back in session, and I, for those of you who, obviously from the television you can't see, but both applicants are present. So we will take the two applications in the order that they appear on the docket. Before we, we do that, every month, we have different things that come up. Tonight is a perfect example of the difference that we were talking about earlier between granting a use variance and pre-existing non-conforming uses. The second application is because it's a pre-existing non-conforming use that wants to alter its use, so that requires the variance, whereas once the variance was granted, it runs with the land in the case of the first application, which allows them to continue to operate what they operate there at that, at that site. Also, with respect to the comments that were raised in the public forum with respect to the second application, it's important that everyone understand that zoning ordinances, when they were enacted and first approved by the courts, were regarded by the courts as, as being in derogation of the rights of property owners, and therefore, they are viewed with a rather strict view by the courts. And one of the things that saves zoning ordinances that allows municipalities to regulate the use of land is because they provide for variances, to allow for situations based on hardships that cannot be anticipated. So it is incorrect, as was voiced, to say that variances are opposed to the zoning ordinance. They are part and parcel of zoning ordinances and land use regulation that makes them acceptable to the courts, and does not require the town to spend thousands or millions of dollars every year buying property to compensate owners because they don't want, aren't going to allow them to use their property in certain manners, which would be the alternative. Under the takings clause of the Constitution, they'd have to pay the owners if they couldn't use them and get a reasonable return. So it's important that the people who might be watching this later on understand that variances are part of what is required of a municipality's zoning, and when we deal with these applications, we try and deal with them in a manner that balances the property owner's rights to use their property and realize a return with the impact that that will have on the neighborhood, and that is why we are here, and that's part of what we do. So I just wanted that to be clear and not leave a- So I just wanted that to be clear and not leave a misimpression with anyone who might be watching the meeting. So, is there a motion with respect to 1589 Titus Avenue? This is a type-two action for seeker purposes, and... Does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to the fence application?
I'll make a motion with approval. With stipulations, with the approval from the town, the generator is too big that somebody looks into it, if it's okay for the use. I don't think it's a substantial change, except for the height is now 10 feet, which is covering everything, and I think we can soften that up a little bit, you know, with some foliage or with, you know, coloring it to look a little better so when you're looking through the woods, you know, it's not that big brown showing there. It's not a substantial request. I don't think it's going to change the physical or environmental conditions. I think it's improved, from what I hear from the neighbor on the other side, that it's a little quieter, and it's, you know, not vibrating as much as the old one. And it's self-created, yeah, but there is no other alternative. You know, if the TV were to go down, I would imagine that, you know, everybody's going to be calling time order, looking for it to go on, and then they would all agree that they should have the backup that goes with it, so. That's it.
I'll second. So if I understand the motion, then it is to approve the variance with conditions, the first being the condition that the generator meets the requirements of the town for the use of the property, and secondly, and that would be for the use of the property under the previously granted variance, obviously, and the second being that they soften the impact of the fence with landscaping in front of it on the west side. Is that right?
Yeah.
You mentioned also painting it, it came up to gray.
Painting it gray or painting or staining it in a gray to match the house.
Did you want to also add the, if there is some way that they please the neighbor to the east in reference to some type of fencing, matching fencing to cover that backyard?
Well, I mentioned that that's what she had indicated because, obviously, she wasn't here, and that was the letter that she sent, and I like to make those things part of the record. But, and actually, when I went and looked at it, if you look at it from her backyard, you have the impression that carrying a fence across from where the fence is now wouldn't be any problem. But when you go and you look at it from the Eckert's property to the south, what you see is that there's a drop-off in the, where that fence is, and there's really maybe six inches to a foot between the back of the air conditioning units and where that fence would run. So I think that if, I don't think it's appropriate to make a condition of the fence, but I think that you might go a long way towards pleasing your neighbor if somehow you could maybe cover those things, put just a little fence around them and paint it gray to match the other. It might, you know, soften the impact that, I mean, it looks like they've been there a while. You say they've been there a while. Apparently, she's just started noticing them, so, you know, if you can do something to do that. But I don't think we need to condition the variance on that.
Even shrubbery.
Or some plantings around the things. That would probably work well. A few arbor vida going across the back would probably be top-notch from her perspective. Any other comments or discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye? Any opposed? No abstentions? So the motion carries six votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we have, we have, we have no members absent. We're down, we're missing a member, but he's not, they're not absent. The next item on the agenda is the application pertaining to, for a use variance for 3392 St. Paul Boulevard, George and Bob's Service Station. There was a, submitted with this was a preliminary, now, what do they call it? A short environmental assessment form, which indicates that the variance would not have an adverse impact on the neighborhood and would have, comes to a conclusion that we find that it does not have an undesirable, is not a negative action for seeker purposes. So is there, does anyone wish to make a motion that would adopt the short environmental assessment form that was attached to the application and the finding of a...
A negative declaration.
A negative declaration.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll make that motion, that parking three additional cars or four additional cars on the lot will not have adverse environmental impact.
Aye. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Yes, Mr. LaPerry's recused himself, so he's abstaining, and so that motion carries five votes in favor and no opposed. And then, is there a motion with respect to the application itself?
I make a mo...
We'll defer to Mr. Evans.
I make a motion that the application be approved, as it would not add any additional signage or any other visual distractions from the property, and only allow them to sell up to 20 cars, three to four cars at a time, as long as property is housed there until...
I'll second the motion. We'll open it up for discussion.
I would ask for some findings.
Oh, yes, we do need findings. Let me supplement your motion with some findings. Thank you for pointing that out. The applicant has provided, and I second Mr. Thomas's earlier comments on the, it's refreshing to finally, after so many years, have somebody who comes in to apply for a use variance that actually provides without prodding and pulling and twisting and arm-turning and extraction of one form or another, the financial information that we need in order, and we're required to have in order to make a finding. The nature of the use of the site that has been in existence for almost, close to 100 years, in the nature of gasoline and other petroleum products, would require a significant amount of investment in order to prepare this site for use in any other fashion than what it has been used for over the last, close to a century. That is on top of the fact that as currently using, the applicant is unable to realize a reasonable rate of return based upon factors that are beyond the applicant's control, and as are demonstrated in the financial information that was submitted by the applicant as part of the application, which is incorporated in the finding by reference. The circumstances that the applicant presented are unique. The applicant's use of the property has been continual for close to a century, and the residential neighborhood in which it is located was built around it, and it was not built in the residential neighborhood. So everybody who built a house or who has bought a house that has been built since 1928, which is the vast majority of the houses in that neighborhood, were built there knowing and having a gas station there. So the fact that it's a gas station and that now cars are going to be sold without any real change in the operation does not, creates unique circumstances for this particular property that none of the other properties in the neighborhood have because none of them have been used as a gas station or for automotive repairs for any period of time at all unless somebody was changing the oil in their garage or their driveway. It's not going to result in any change in the character of the neighborhood because, as I mentioned, the neighborhood's character developed with the gas station in place, so it is a part of the character of the neighborhood, and that wouldn't be a change. That's a continuation of the character of the neighborhood. And clearly, the factors that have resulted in the economic circumstances that are facing the owner are not self-created. They are despite his efforts to make the business a viable business and to minimize any negative impact on the neighborhood.
I have two comments. First comment is I would suggest a, some language, maybe a condition, that the only signage to be used to advertise the cars are dollar amounts, dollar stickers, whatever the proper industry term is.
So if I put a condition on the motion that indicates that the only visible sign of sales will be prices posted on the vehicle, would that be okay?
That would be fine with me.
Call it a price tag, right?
Price tag. And the other comment is that we, the board, we have an obligation to only pass, to pass the minimum amount of variance necessary, and the applicant stated that three cars at a time would be sufficient as opposed to four. So while the motion was to approve four, I would just suggest that if we were to approve three, it would achieve the result, and the applicant could always come back and ask for a fourth and pay that filing fee.
So are you agreeable to that condition as well?
Agreed.
All right. So limit the number of cars for sale to three at any one time. That what you were looking for? And that would be cars that are actively being sold that have a price tag in. So if you picked up, if he picked up a car that he had to fix up before it could be sold, that wouldn't be counted as one of the three?
Nope.
Any other discussion or comments from the board? All those in favor, say aye.
Even though I recuse myself, there was a mention of no more than 20 being sold in the year.
Well...
And I don't, I don't think you could do that, only because you don't know if he's going to be selling all three every month, or...
Well, we're not limiting the number that he sells in a year.
Mr. Evans didn't make a mention of that.
I would draw that portion. Okay. Three cars with no...
All right, I didn't understand that to be a condition of the, of what you were doing.
I didn't mean it to be, but I can understand his point, so.
Right. He might sell 36. He could sell three a month, and as long as he's not selling more than, has no more than three on the lot at a time, the basic message is we don't want to end up like a situation over on Hudson Avenue without mentioning anything in particular. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And one abstention. So the motion carries five votes in favor, no opposed, one abstention. We have no absences, and...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I did want to congratulate the applicant, the last applicant, for a very good packet with very good information. We do not see that on a regular basis. So thank you.
I agree. Nice job, guys.
It's my first time, I think, since 2006, I think I joined the board and approved the Harrah's variance for your competition, that we've actually seen, like, real numbers that could work the first time around.
Yeah.
And I believe that that concludes the business on our agenda, so we are adjourned. We'll see everybody in February.